Open this up in prayer, so if everybody would stand.
That's right. Everybody, thank you for this gorgeous day. Thank you for the gorgeous days that we've had lately in front of the rain. We ask that you would be with us today, help us to make the decisions that you would have us make to the outside. Lord, we ask your blessings upon people of Fort Payne, those especially that have been involved in the coronavirus situation. And we just ask your protection over all of us. Christ can lead us.
Amen.
First flag, attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everybody to our council meeting. Does everybody have a chance to review the minutes from the previous meeting? They've got a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? A motion carried. Okay, uh, payment of bills. They've got a motion for a second to pay the bills. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Okay, first on the agenda, citizen participation. LaRue Hardingger to present a plaque of appreciation to the mayor and council for the support of Toys for Tots. So, LaRue, if you would come at this time?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm LaRue. This is Landon. He's the co-coordinator for Toys for Tots in County. And first of all, I want to say thank you guys. I can't thank you enough for all you've done. Our city is our county, we thank you. For Saturday, Toys for Tots campaigns, the city of Fort Payne has provided space, as you know. Our honor is to store and to sort and bag toys for the children. And we want each of you to know how much we appreciate you. Without your help, there is no way that we could provide Christmas presents for saving children and lives. This Christmas, not paying, excuse me, but because of your help, combined with support from the community, we were able to provide 7,939 Christmas toys for 1,160 children. That was 427 families. And that's throughout the county. We're in the process of recognizing, it was a little late, so we did it early and we were on your agenda for March, but as you know, COVID, we were delayed, so this is why we're doing it, recognizing y'all's help. So, to make sure that no child in County wakes up on Christmas morning without a present under their tree, or that they feel forgotten, or that Christmas has passed by. This year will be a bit different. We've been ordered by the Marine Corps, who is the, we are under the umbrella of the United States Marine Corps as Toys for Tots Foundation, within order to follow local, state, and regional regulations according to COVID mandates. So, it will be a little bit more difficult this year for us to raise the funds a little bit, but we're going to do our best to try to raise enough money to serve us to probably be more children this year. So, we're going to try to be as innovative as we can to possibly have some virtual fundraisers. If you guys have any connections, any ideas to help us out, just note that I am open to your suggestions. And as far as I'm concerned, you guys are part of the campaign. You are part of our campaign. First of all, we want to recognize Mayor Larry Chester.
Did you pay off who I am with this?
I think it's you. Let me read it first. Presented to Fort Payne Mayor Larry Chester in appreciation for your support to the 2013 through 2019 Toys for Tots campaigns. Total children served in seven years, 6,173. So, we really appreciate you and we want to present you with this recognition.
I would bring it if you did. Thank you, Lord.
Thank you. And we also want to give this to the city council, if anyone wants to do this. It's not quite a word either. Presented to Fort Payne City Council in appreciation for your support to the 2019 Toys for Tots campaign. And this goes to the entire city council. I would like to add this, these meetings, we just got work. Our campaign was number one in the southeast region of the Toys for Tots area, which includes all of East Ray and Fort Worth.
Awesome.
Congratulations.
Let me just say, we appreciate what you guys do because I know it's not an easy task putting all this together. And I know our county suffered for a few years and didn't have a Toys for Tots. And the Marine Corps picked it up and they've done an awesome job with it. And I just, I appreciate the effort that y'all put towards the Toys for Tots. Okay, moving on to committee reports. Does anybody have any committee reports? Okay. Moving on to ordinances and resolutions. Resolution 2020-28, accepting the lowest qualified bid for sewer jetter truck.
Bid actually came in a good bit lower than what we were expecting. You'll notice on the resolution, it's got a breakdown. Lowest bid was company by the name of Sewer Duck. And their price with all the options was a good bit cheaper than the next bidder. So, Tim and I discussed it and we recommend accepting the low bid with all the options on it.
I think we originally talked about 260, so that's considerably less. Why don't we accept the low bid and make specifications?
They've got a motion to accept that bid. And we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. All right, resolution 2020-29, accepting the low bid for the traffic signals at 49th Street North. This is at the New School, the intersection there at the New School.
I moved.
They've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. All right, resolution 2020-30, authorizing Lad Environmental as engineer of record for projects seeking CBDG and ARC grant monies.
This has to do with the hospital demolition grant we've been trying to get, why sometimes there has to be an engineer of record in the.
They've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Resolution 2020-31, granting tax abatements to project KM.
This is a project that will be going out adjacent to Plasma Incorporated. It's a window company that's been talking to the economic development company for.
Manufacturing.
Yes.
Manufacturing.
Manufacturing. They'll employ about 43 people.
They've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. All right, resolution 2020-32, granting, granting tax payments to project KM-PR.
Same, same business. They just rent the building to do sales, basically.
They've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. All right, new business, discussion about converting the tier two employees to tier one employees.
Well, this took all the tension several months ago and it's, you know, it's kind of on the back burner because of the COVID crisis. But time is drawing now on it. Don has looked at it again and just let him address it, if you will, Don.
Let me pay a spell.
Here, look through, put it in order, so it goes through real fast. First place, here's our demographics, what we're looking like, tier two, tier one. The changes that lead to this. Second part, right here, ARSDA. This is, you take this count on McDonald's actuary right here, all this accounting here. All that down to get this number right here, okay? The problem is now, this number of $51,000 is the impact of the city. That's what it would cost the city to provide this program to tier two employees. Problem is now, that I found out this week was, these numbers were derived from 2018 numbers. We had 78 tier two employees. We now have 99 tier two employees. So, you're looking at probably an increase of 20% above this $51,000. Now, that's not a lump sum. That can be paid out over the course of the year. That's the impact to our, our costs, the city's costs.
yearly, every year.
Now, let's go through the whole page, then I'm going to come back to this. I want you to take this into consideration here. Here's, if we want to do that, here's how we can go about this. We have to adopt this resolution right here, not give you a sample adoption or sample resolution. This is saying that we want, we want to adopt this, but we do not want to put any more cost on the tier one employees, okay? Now, we have to make plans and send, make this resolution to the, to the RISC board so they can consider, so they can deny it, or they can accept. Our plan would be, we don't want to put any more burden on the tier one employees unless we cannot make our contribution. So, we park the costs there. Employees unable to make the required employer contributions. So, at that time, we would have to charge our tier one employees, we don't have to send more, okay? That's our plan, we won't call it. Now, let's go back to this right here, this number. It's 51,000, because I said, does this anymore, it's actually only more. That, that date could come 20 years from now, if we can't make the contribution. It could come five years from now, it could come next year. These numbers are this year. We don't know what will do next year. We don't know if it's going to increase. I'm pretty sure it's not going to decrease. But at that point, while I'm telling this, I just want you, before you make a decision in the future, I want you to know that, that thing may come sooner than we thought. We don't know. We're hoping for the best, but prepare for the worst. So, it could come, we do have to charge our tier one employees. Now, having said that, me as a tier one employee, if you can't make your contributions, I would think we've got some more trouble somewhere else. And I, as a tier one employee, would want to make sure that I could protect the program, the system. So, I would be the person, I'd be the one that would win the pay tier nine employees. That's worst case scenario, okay? So, that's the downside. I want you to know that upfront. That's the downside. It may cost more as we, as the pressure catches up and the tier one employees go into retirement, tier two's going, we're going to have a lot of tier two. Your costs will definitely go up. I see, I see these costs will go up. Now, when we say, as I noted, and I'm involved, when we say, we're not changing tier two to tier one, we just give it a tier two, tier one benefit. That's all we're doing. So, if they go to another agency that didn't accept this, this plan, and they just stay with their old plan, and they'll go back to them, this real tier two employee without those benefits. Benefits are, they, they get to retire the day they reach their requirements. That's time in service and years of service, a year of service and pay, in some cases. If you've got 10 years and you're 60, you can retire. If you're not 60, you have to have 30 years of service to retire. That's the element that they're going to give. They're not going to have to wait to the age of 62 for regular employees, and age of 55, our employees, to retire. So, that's the.
Our only option. This is the only way we can go. I thought there were several choices.
As in what to adopt.
Mm-hmm.
The other options is to pass on 200% more to tier one employees.
Okay. Well, who made that decision? That's all I have. I guess my question. Okay.
That's, that, that's my suggestion too. That's my recommendation. You don't have to make a full decision if you want to pass on the tier, tier one employees of 200% more. Here's a drawback to that. I think Andy was here, Red might have been here, I know Johnny was here. 2009, 2010, we thought this was required of us. And, and the employees on tier one, four went, arrayed that year, thinking that 200% was being paid. It was not being paid. It was not required at that time. We didn't know. The city apparently didn't know. But the 200%, we thought, the year was being paid, never was paid, wasn't required to be paid. All your tier one employees took it. They lost a raise. So, if you're going to pass that on, I think some considerations should be made with tier one employees. Before we went arrayed, thinking this, I waited. Best route that we can take is the one with four, I feel.
The simple part of that is 57% of our employees are tier one, 43% are tier two. So, if you, if you penalize 57% of our employees by making them pay more, so the other 43 can get the same retirement, we don't have to do that. We may have to do that at some point in the future. But right now, what we can do is give our tier two, tier one benefits. It's going to cost us $60,000 or change, this year, maybe that next year. But I, I think if, if the time comes, we have to do something for the unfunded mandate, we'd do that at that time. But right now, we can give benefits. It's going to cost us a little money. But we've been four years into this now as this body, and we've given arrays every year, but one year when we changed the sales tax round, and we got back on solid footing. We've absorbed the insurance cost every year. And I think whatever we can do to keep those 226 employees working for us is going to be to our benefit. Because you're not going to be able to replace a lot of these people. I talked to the department head this morning, and he's, he's got an opening coming up, and he can't find anybody to do the job that he's going to have to fill. And, and that's going to happen more and more. The sad reality is, there's not a lot of people out there in the workforce right now, coming into the workforce, that look at a 20, 30-year retirement. They jump around for a dollar raise, here, there, and younger. So, a lot of these employees might not be here for 10, 15 years, but we need to protect the ones we've got.
That's, that's the trend I see, is our retention rate is very likely to go to somebody else on, so.
Right.
We found out the county is, is already adopted this plan, say, a rain, a flood, the city of College, Collegeville, considering, Gas Oil, as you well know, has adopted. We're about to be an island, and we're going to start trading out in Florida. I don't think, I know what my police and fire colleagues have told me, I personally don't think it's a recruiting issue at this point. It's going to be a recruiting issue in the future. The problem is, we have to make a decision now. We don't have a future plan. If you want to push it forward, you can push it till May the 8th, '21. That's as far as you can push it. But know that number before you, it's not going to go up 20%, it's going to go up even higher than that.
I think we do it now and develop, when we talk about this. I think recruiting employees is one of the most valuable assets we have, and we need to take.
I agree.
Great.
Take care of it.
Talking about the guy's board and the reason they went to what they did. If you get a young man and he's, he's a good man, you want to keep him and all that thing. If we don't pass this, you're going to wear him out. And, you know, you, like all of us know, after, after a few years of hard work, you get rough times. So, you could have a bunch of old men that couldn't do much anymore. And, and you need to reward them with being able to have a good retirement. So, that would be the.
If you can afford to, and I'm not a part of that, if you can, then you got to make some decisions, just elsewhere, like I, like I said. There's no, there's no static number with this thing. The future, we don't know. And I just want you, you know, to give some, some suggestions. What I've looked at is no going into it. The numbers may change drastically. You have to make some hard decisions. At that time, we can't guarantee anybody right now. Those numbers will go up, so kind of big number.
Thing, the thing, we, we've got, we've got a good bunch of employees that do a great job for us, and it makes our job easy. And, you know, we need to, we need to take care of, in my opinion. And I couldn't imagine having to work 16 years on it.
No, this, you guys, this resolution.
Probably, yeah.
Do you think the father bear?
We can pass it next meeting.
Well, I won't make a motion. We adopt it. Well, I can proceed with granting the resolution.
Have you ready to adopt next, next meeting?
You know, you've already adopted, and you know it to that side.
Based upon your approval?
As long as I can get together, make sure it's correctly looking, and you take care of it in the available minutes.
Second, red motion.
So, we have a motion on the floor to accept this, and we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Don.
Thanks, Don. Right away.
And motion carried. Okay. New business, discussion about purchasing a Skyjack forklift for the Fort Payne Water Department, from the Fort Payne Water Department. Excuse me.
This is a piece of equipment that we've come upon in the last month or so. We've, we've had it budgeted a couple of years and taken it out for cranes and similar pieces of equipment. But this piece of equipment is actually a Skyjack brand telescoping forklift. It's got a 6,030-foot reach. We can get it for $20,000. It's got a brand new paint job on it. And since it is coming from the water department to us, if we buy it, we can buy it from one entity to the other without having to do any bidding on it. So, it's already being used right now on loan at the fire department to build the new burn building. And Tim's got quite a few things they can do with it. Michael's got quite a few things they can do with it. It'd actually be used to pull the pumps at the silent pump stations, quite a few different things. We're still going to have to have a crane occasionally at the wastewater plant. That's just a given because of the reach out over the containment vessels. But this is a $74,000 piece of equipment we can get for $20,000.
That's, we got money in the budget for it, and I've, I've looked at it, and I think it'd be a good, good piece of equipment for us. We could use it in several places.
Oh, it's, yeah, multiple departments can use it.
Oh, yeah. It's on tires, so you can literally drive it down the road. It's, it's at the fire, if you want to go by this afternoon and look at it, it's at the training center on the north end, it's the bright orange one. But they painted it, checked it out. They were looking at it again this morning, had a little hydraulic leak they were going to fix. But it's a, it's got 500 hours on it, and it's a, it's an excellent piece of equipment. I'd make mostly, or I guess I don't make that since I'm on the board.
Well, I probably could, if it's out of.
Just, yeah.
I'll second.
There we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Two would stand. Okay, motion carried. Those three of us. Okay, activity per minute for First Methodist Church, church services in the city park, Rotary Pavilion, August 2nd, 9th, 16th, 23rd, 30th, from 7:30 a.m. to 10 a.m.
I think the mayor talked to them on their application. Mayor said either or, so what, which one is it?
Well, I think that the 30th, it's been reserved someone else, the other county. And what was actually done, they paid the project for the premium. And, you know, they leave everything just like everybody else. They leave it all, it's a problem that. As far as having the church services in the city park, the city park's open to everyone. We have them in most places, for over, I think this is the first time we've had somebody ask to use it for several weeks ago. But it's still open. We're not reserving the park for him, right? They understand that. If somebody's having a family reunion there, or kids playing, that's just what he is. The only reason for having the code is that they didn't pay the right, right, and it's all about.
So, they're wanting to reserve the pavilion?
Yeah, they have a reserve pavilion for those. Now, actually, the, the seventh floor, it's only 3%.
That's five.
Yeah.
That's five on the board.
And I think this is basically just a informational type thing, just to let everybody know. And we'll, I think we've already talked with Randy, but we'll get with Randy here and make sure he realizes it. And then just grab 20 people and then get that one to know.
We have a motion. We got a motion?
A second.
We've got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Okay, Mayor, you have a report for us?
Just three things. Tim finished up the payings today. They've done a heck of a job this year. We've probably done twice the amount that's been done in years prior. And I've looked at all of it, and I think most of y'all have too, and it was really, we still got some triding to do with this work. The pay business, done a heck of a job. I will make a recommendation that in the future, we need to come up with a bill. We just can't continue to put asphalt on our way, we're going to eventually have to hire somebody to come in and deal before we pay. Keep that in mind for next year, decide what you want to do. I, I won't be here, but certain of you will, I'm sure. Anyway, now, like the state, if the state was built up, I would allow it to the point, you know, that we had a trouble with any kind of access or anything. It's just been life support, trying to deal with it, but it's just going to, anyway, that's just the point for. I sent everybody an email out, and I said, everybody know this, that we appointed Michael A. as a permanent place where a treatment through, in the department is, doing an action job, and well-sleeved, and Michael, he's got one of the smallest crews in town. He's been the hardest person to him.
kept, he's always pushing him, he's, he's done a good job, you know, the next time you see him, you need to stay. Uh, I have one uh, I guess announcement, the uh Council agent, who we, the thing, uh has a range for some wholesale food company, I don't know exactly where it is, to provide food to be given out to the public. And they have already done, I think, across one or two places, and what it amounts to is, they have five hundred and sixty boxes for a city full time. And there's no stipulation, first done, first there, uh helped a little bit to uh Chris about the paper issue, and get the information out, and uh possibly some uh social media. We will furnish a police officer to kind of keep order, we'll probably need three or four uh people to actually give the food out, but we expect it to only be a two-hour deal. So anyway, this is a, get a little information out on paper and from the other sources, don't plan on doing any other advertising, so I think we'll have to prove it to the crowd either way. And that's it.
All right, well, I know that uh school is starting back in August, and we, you know, I know they've got a plan, and whether they're gonna do virtual school or uh be in the classroom, but we as the council have decided again this year to uh give the hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the uh school system for supplies, and also the fifty thousand to the teachers for their classrooms. Uh we will have a presentation at our next council meeting on August the fourth, when we present these checks, but uh I've been hearing some out in the community about if people was gonna have to start buying their school supplies, but we wanted everyone to know that uh we are planning to, to give the hundred and fifty thousand for the school supplies, so that everybody knows that, uh and can make plans accordingly. And we will make that presentation at our next council meeting. Uh also, I wanted to, to let you know, uh we're gonna be, the, the council and I, along with Jimmy Cunningham, are going to tour the uh, the new school facility tomorrow with uh G M C, uh they've set up the tour for us to go in and, and tour the new school, so looking forward to that. Anybody have anything else? Okay, everybody stay safe and uh keep social distancing.